Ge e uh u u u u la eh ah eh eh ah i of Uh ah mm ah uh ah mm ah uh mm 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 Ish, 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 ish Yeah, that sound. Biddler, biddler, tweet, 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 what the hell? Oh wait, that was the song, wasn't it? I thought someone was coming out of my control of them, man. Anyway, joining realm. Zz, zzz, zzz, zzz Right, yeah, this is normal. This is normal. Oh my god, there's a llama in the car. This is normal. Oh my god. Who, who put this here? Oh my god. Oh my god, I've got a full inventory. Iron ore. Straight in here. No, the... Boo, boo, yo, Jawslove. Oh my god. Sorry, it's long. What? What's long? The book? I haven't read it. I took it down. Where is it? I'll pull it in somewhere. Do I have any boxes? Got one box. Eh... Bu 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 bu. Palkachap. Need to cook this. But hey Nico, you don't need to read in theory, I worked on the basement. Oh man. Zv, zv, zv... Where did you do? Oh, with the torches, you mean? And is all of this now the same? Is this the thing? Who did this? Heyyyy. Right, why is Hypersife not being told that he needs to move his shit? You're right, Steven. He's, he's here right now. Aw, mate. I've ta- I've, I've mentioned multiple times, and I've even took this down. Oh eh... Oh fuck. Dude, Jo- Hypersife, mate, I told you like 3 days ago that this needed moving. And then you came yesterday and I told you then as well. And whoever's done this is, ugh. My god. Why are people just doing literally whatever they want? There's no pressure plate here now, because someone's done that. Ahhh. Mate, once again, I'm just like, what the fuck? This is why, this is one of the reasons I avoided it for so long. Because I'm not gonna be sat sweating it all day and doing everything and literally, uh... I literally would have to be on 24/7 because people can't be asked to keep an eye on people. Right, Jawslove and Nico, you're doing a terrible job. Seriously, you're doing a terrible job at being like, operators or whatever it is because you should be keeping an eye on stuff like this. Like this fucking floor's been completely removed and that's grieving, big time. Oh well, Dimrit's been completely ignored because I've been trying to make a nice community place for people to live in and respect and have a nice time in, but then people just come in and do whatever the fuck they want, so... And the people that you leave in charge give more of a fuck about all the shitty little things they're doing over here than actually keeping order, which is what it's about really. Especially in the first week, making sure people are actually respecting what they're supposed to be doing. Because if they're not, then they're getting out. It's as simple as that. Let's fanny on doing everything over here for ourselves and not actually be what we're meant to be. The mods, the operators, whatever you want to fucking call it. Oh, and there was a nice little hole here as well. More shit that people can't be asked to clean up after themselves. It's absolutely lovely. And this is the thing, it's gonna end up being taken down, I know it, because I, if I've, if I come on every single time and this is what's happening, then I can't be like, bringing that, like, any stress to myself. There's no fucking point. We were having a fine time before, just every now and then playing together and stuff and few, you know, with the issues. It was less stress with the issues. Eh, yeah, well, he would, he would, would have been, but he's not been on yet, since it was a realm, I don't think, so... But no, I can't believe that that is, ugh. Yeah, it was dirt and stone because I hadn't finished. No, don't change it back, just leave it. There's no fucking point in wasting your time. Look at this, it's absolutely disgusting to walk down. Literally just pissing me off walking down it. I don't know what makes people think they can just come in even though you got told that, that you can't build anything. The whole point of fucking Fight Night Friday is li- it's literally pointless if like, and having any reward for anything outside of Fight Night Friday in terms of land and being able to build and all that kind of stuff, people are just gonna fucking do it anyway. There's absolutely no point. And I seriously can't be asked coming on every single time to just be stressed out to be like, oh, why the fuck's the entire world changed? Oh, because people can't be asked to listen. And follow the rules that they said they would follow. Instead, I'm fucking coming on every single time and fanning on doing stupid shit like this. Because people are literally just lazy douchebags. And now we're gonna have another fucking 10 minute gap where people can't be asked to get in bed and they wanna just take the piss as well. And for some reason, we have to tell everyone every time it's bedtime instead of them just going, "Oh, it's a rule to sleep at night time, I better get in bed." Mm-hmm. Yes, it is. And it also sets the tone for the rest of the stream as well, because like, it's, it's hard to like, fucking not be embarrassed to the fact that you just went mental for what seems like nothing. But the point is, it's been days and people can't be asked to not to follow the rules. There's no point in writing them, there was no point in making the fucking whole thing of this, no, literally wasting weeks of my life waiting to make this shit. So people can come in and do what they want, instead of doing what like, like, why does this keep growing? Every single time, there's like fucking more of this and it's just getting more, like, why is it on the path? It seems stupid, but we spent time fucking sorting this shit out. And it just looks fucking stupid. And what's this about? Fucking clean up after yourself, Jesus Christ. People are such lazy douchebags. And I bet there's a fucking thousand floating trees again even though the silly twat said that they wouldn't fucking do it. No one's in the Discord right now. Oh, Jawslove's in the Discord right now. I don't really fancy sitting there complaining to people. This is why I don't like it, like, wanna come on stream and have this happen straight away every single time. Oh, guaranteed, this is getting pissed taken at me as well. Let's go and check. What the fuck is this? Ugh, good god. I'm just gonna walk away from that and ignore it. Seriously cannot be asked, why the fuck's that being made there as well? Zzz, zzz... I literally just need the fucking like, invisible portion to throw over there. Oh, for fuck's sake, why? Where's here? Ahhh. What? What? CBA with trolls. Cheers for the trophy, douchebag. Got nothing to break this with at the minute. Oh, there was gonna be some, wasn't there? Mass destruction. He's already taken the piss before, so CBA would even consider listening to anything. 2 secs. BRB. Sing rap god, don't even know what that is. Oh wait, is that that Eminem, Eminem song? You didn't accidentally take anything. You seen the valuable stuff in the corner. And that's why you went over to it. Dun dun dun. Your house is completely fine, Steven. There's certain people who aren't gonna get like, things removed. Where the hell were all my boxes? Thought he had some. 36, I knew it. Boxes for days. Beedee doo dee doo dee doo dee doo dee doo dee doo dee doo dee. Yeah, man. One sec, I'm just getting a pickaxe. If I can. Oh man, just chuck me spade away now. Heyyyy. People should build their houses away from maybe... No, no, that's not what's happening anymore, Steven. We've removed most of the houses with exception to a few. And everyone is living in here for now. And then we're having PvP tournaments. Et cetera. Eh, for land and stuff. What's up, Atomix? Sad face? Sad face? How's it going? It goes like shamanababababababababab. Welcome Moxon to another stream, by the way. Sorry about, s- (coughs) Sorry about the vibes. Cook this chicken. That will do for now. Yeah, why is there something in someone's room on the first floor, by the way? This shouldn't even be possible. There's not enough light in the centre. Think there's not enough light in the centre. Can't have things spawning. No, no, no. Ah, gave me a good explosion. Can't wait to play Destruction All Stars, I'm not gonna lie. Eh, what was I doing? A torch. Or 5. Billy on. Yeah, I'm definitely later than I wanted to be. With this one. But it is what it is. Now we'll go for here. That should be fine. Oh, this is partially why. Interesting. Spaced out better before, I think. Whatever. That looks too dark there as well. Oh, but there's a glowstone there. I don't even know. Do do GG, are you mad at me? Mad at you, why? Mad at you? I ain't mad at you. Is it because creep or what did you say? What, I didn't hear explosion or anything? Oh, see, this is what's annoying. You have to say it every single time. Oh, I was ma- I was like, I was frustrated because of the floor thing and all that, and, and... What, what was the other thing? Yeah, whatever. And because I said days ago that we needed that thing moving. I'm fine now, man. Do you not have a bed, Hypersife? Because why aren't you in your room? Ehhhhh. Oh, for fuck's sake. Oh, for fuck's sake. Hmm. Inconsistent but no matter. I do. Oh. Uh, excuse me, Jesus Christ. We'll leave one of these. Oh, sheet. Fixed it. Tomorrow, community member announcement, I think. Yeah. It seems no one's paid attention to the stream title. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, 3, 4... 1, 2, 3, 4... GG gift. Dun 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 dun, town meeting, hmm, yeah, but everyone in the realm is the, who, who, who matters? Where's your sign gone? Oh, what the hell, where's the sign gone for this store? Whatever, don't give a fuck. Oh no, what have you done? No. Oh my god. What is going on here? I literally, I just did that in a square, for fuck's sake. Mate, I just don't even understand why I almost like, blown, I don't even know. Oh, why is that exposed? My fucking god. What the fuck are people playing at? Just literally doing what they fucking want. It's pissing me right off. Outside of the shit, do what you want. Jesus Christ. Oh my god, I'm so drained by this shit, my god, fuck's sake. Okay now. No, it's just a game, not when you spend a, like, um, it's £6.50 a month here, which is fucking pathetic, but still. It's the fact that no one gives a flying fuck that I literally spent time doing all this shit. No one gives a flying fuck that I spent time writing the rules, or even thinking of the rules, trying to think of decent things to do in the future and stuff, everyone's just like, oh, I'll just do it all anyway. Literally no point in even having an idea or a thought. It is proper stressful. I mean, it shouldn't be, because it should just be people following the simple, very basic rules that I got told not to expand on because it would have been going too far. I wanted to add more. Oh, fuck off. God damn. Ooh. Oh man, now I've gotta look at this ugly thing. This is why there's no point in everyone being such a rush to get endgame stuff, because everyone's just running around not knowing what to fucking do themselves now. They've got literally now to do other than like, pretty much interfere with everyone else. Or start doing things that no, like, the, like, the server in general isn't ready to do, or not the cer- yeah, well, yeah, pretty much. How many more do I need? No, I've done us all in there. Wish I can join so I will improve the ASI land. Java one day, maybe. I can't believe I've not needed to eat yet. That's crazy. That is crazy. How come I haven't needed to eat yet? Hmm. You are indeed, Atomix. Thank you so much. Oh, I need to eat now. It's very weird. Hmmmm. Oh, I didn't even see Silent Edge. Ah, ew, I'm in my room, me. If that's who you're talking to. 16. Hmm, it's a bit suspicious. I didn't need to eat. For half an hour. And then as soon as I say that it's weird that I didn't need to eat yet, I start needing to eat. Hello, Bonzi. Welcome. Oh, piss. No. Is that a gup? Is this 3 high now? Oh, it is. That's what I was mining down for, before. If you know who is breaking rules or ban him or warn him, he is leaving, if you know, yeah, CD D O G and he's getting banned for now. Because if he wants to come on and just troll, then that's not what's gonna happen, you know what I mean? Yeah, nice one, yeah. That's the only reason I was, if you, you can, you can fill that crap in with stone if you want, that's the only reason, because I wasn't sure, I've just realised there. That's the only reason I'd mine down a little bit more. But yeah, I don't have any stone on me right now. Oh, I can make some, can I? No, I can't, I need to smell it. But like this bit, yeah, you can put that as stone. Be a debut, yeah, of course. 2 seconds, I'll also um, bring out the ban hammer, you know what I'm saying? Ad real members. They can't switch. Oh, for Christ's sake. Oh my guild. Oh, the RJ Fox that you were talking about, by the way, draws fours on Discord if you're there. Uh, that was someone who joined on the first day. So they, they're fine. They've got a room in the barracks. That's all you need to do. If you, if you got confused by anyone, just look in the barracks. It keeps putting this back to the top to pee me off. There you go, Bonzi. You should have an invite right now. Oi, oi, oh, oi. Oi. Oh, it's the eye camera. Uh, TDDOG. Oh god, how do I get off this? I'm not gonna lie, but I've done something. It won't let me go off it. What the hell? I might have to dashboard. I can only scroll up and down. What the hell? I don't know if my game's crashed or something. Does it say that I'm still in the game? Anyone that's in the... Anyone that's in the game still? I don't think it's... I think I need to dashboard. I've dashboarded. Don't know what's going on. Why does dead up today on to angle? Reloading. Right now. Didn't my rip? You're in the game, never mind, you just left. I'll be back in in a moment. Bewilding terrain. Right, one second. Huh? Just a flaw like you've already started doing. This stuff here. Right, hard rail members. Will be a sayic. Oh my. Right, I've sent you an invite. It should be there, hopefully. Right, there we go. Boom. Oh, hang on, I need to do something else as well. Right. Did you get that one, Bonzi? I can see your hands. Okay. Opposite for left rail. You only win. This is really sad. Who was Princess Yesai? She is my daughter. We, we discovered this the other day. I need to do this bit. Oh, balls. That bit didn't need doing, actually. She's sorting her stuff out, I think. Her boxes and stuff. That's what she was doing yesterday's. Anyway. You see that on the other side as well? Oh, yeah, yeah. No. Right. Cool, go on, pair of visit. Did you get that? Invite, Bonzi, by the way? Now finally, why? Looks like why in yes. Interesting. Some artwork. Cool. There you go. Ye, nice one. I've got some, oh. Oh no. Didn't even notice that. Fixed. Ish. Crab on a bike. Oh, does this bring this back? Oh, is that, no, that's on and off, yeah, okay. Why's that got nothing on? No, that's this one. No. You're a moon dasher. How's it going? How was it going, the moon dasher? Dasher of moons? Doesn't make sense, of course it does. Oops. That one's inconsistent. Bruh. Sixty-four. Slash. No. JK, whatever. Ha ha. Is it like that? There we go. Yeah, my name doesn't make sense, but I guess nickname. No, no, moon dash is fine. No, moon dash makes sense, of course it does. I was saying dasher of moons when I said it like that. Moon dash, you sound sick. Anyway. Anyway. Hmm. It's very weird that I didn't need to eat for ages and now I've had to eat loads. There is a secret behind Atomicz. I think we talked about it before. Think you might have mentioned. Right, this is just temporary. We'll just see how many fit. Ooh, it's off. Hate it. No, I shouldn't have done that. Uh, oh. Noise. TY. More boxes! Bonzi's in. Make your way to the barracks, Bonzi, and we will show your room. I think this need, I named this, this to a powerful alien named Thompson Benton. Oh shit, no, that sounds sick. Benton was well cool. It's still going, isn't it? Isn't it? Like a more, a more like recent... Oh, what's going on with the stream? Just buffed, buff, buffed? Just buffered for me there. Let's get all this wood. It's becoming bedtime. New Benton is trash, yeah, I assume it would, would be in comparison to the old one. I used to love Benton. Omniverse was nice. Which one was that? Was the, what was the second season, uh, like, you know, because it had like a subtitle, didn't it? Where did my house go? We cleaned it up, Bonzi. It had been too long, I'm afraid. Open chat. Oh shit, Bonzi, if you don't mind, actually, come to the barracks now, there's a spare room, so if you could... Come over to the big Yes Island sign. Alien force. Hi. No. You can commandeer this room. No. Silver. Oh, there's no frigging thingy in there. Bed, I'll go and get you a bed. One sec. Boom. Is there a bed? No, there's no bed. BRB, Krabby, Orca, welcome. It's just nighttime, give me a mo, and then you can join. Oh, there's no bed in here. Oh my god, there's a cat. We need to turn this cat. We need to turn enough cats for the, uh, to like surround the dimmerip. One at each corner and then a few in between. Or is that Bonzi's cat? I think it might be Bonzi's cat. Welcome Krabby Orca though. Oh, sorry, Steven Robbins says, I haven't been able to play Minecraft because I have to buy it again. Oh, why Steven? Something happened, what's, what's, oh, do you mean on PC or something? Oh, there's some boxes. Whatever. But yeah, Bonzi, come here a sec, sorry. I mean, the rules are pretty obvious, but still. They're just here. If you don't mind giving him a quick read. Boop, 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 boop. Oh, PS4 Minecraft has been removed from my library. I don't know why, so I may be able to buy it again, but it'll probably be a while. Oh shit. Have you tried going to the page on the start to see if it just says download? Uh, AGG are gonna make a Yesi server for Java anytime soon. Probably not anytime soon, no. I don't know if you're listening, but if, if people just keep, start living with people and building houses together and stuff like that, that have already got houses. It makes the whole thing pointless with the... With the... Uh, tournaments and stuff. That's why it was, it was, it was a bad idea for Nico and Blaze to live together, but that was before the realm, so... Oh shit. This bothers me. Never mind. Okay, GG, gotta go. Yeah, I've done this, it's just, oh shit. No way. That shit, Steven. More boxes. See you soon, Atomicz. Thank you for coming. Thank you for the support. There's a torch missing. Oh, I made all that for no reason. I wanted to make this. Never mind. Yeah, it's time for us now, because I did actually want to play it, but it's fine, so I'll watch it. Oh, no way. I'd be really happy if you played as well. I'm glad you like watching, obviously, as well. If, if it's nighttime, oh, by the way, I don't know. So, sorry if it turns to night and I haven't got on a bed. Hey, reconnaissance, where's my food? It's no worries, Steven. It's no worries, Steven. Aw man. One, two, three, four. Aw man. One, two, three, four. It's a bit dark over here, I feel. Feels dim. Oops. I definitely do. Oh, did that wrong. Need to miss this one. Oops. Aw man. What's everyone up to?
Uh, how many levels does it have on it?
Wow.
Oh, that's alright then. Did someone join, by the way?
Yeah, just me.
Channel, no, no, I'm watching a channel if someone joins.
What are you talking about? I'm in it, you're doing.
Oh, yeah, there we go. I thought someone joined, I was really confused. Why don't I get to ping then? Like, for example, when you joined, I got like a little bling.
Because I'm the master. Probably.
Oh, can't, if you have any, uh, whappes?
What are yous all doing?
I'm just looking at Korn's channel, so I was gonna find out if Charlie can pick up.
What are you doing, Nico? What's Korn doing?
I'm just chilling in my house.
I mean... Operators, you know what I'm saying? Earn your frigging place, man.
So we should stay in the barracks?
No. I'm saying, I'm like doing all this on my own still. No one's doing anything with me, and yous are the operators. You have a bit of a role. Well, it's a bit obvious, isn't it? Like, we were mining all this for frigging weeks and you didn't do anything with that then. And now I'm doing all these boxes, you could at least bring me some bloody boxes or something, I don't even know, it's common sense, mate. But act like a frigging operator, you're a mod and admin, whatever you want to call it. Because like, you can't just expect it for free, you know what I mean? Two, three, four, five. If the iron farm's filled, then what, like, that's a waste of time, move on to something else.
Maybe we're trying to fix it, but...
If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. To be honest, in the first place, that was the worst thing you could have done. This would all be done by now if we all cracked down in that last week, two, two weeks ago, something like that, but I've literally been pretty much doing it all on my own, with the exception to a couple of materials. If yous don't want to do what I want yous to do, and if you don't want to play how I want to play, and how the realm is going to be played, then don't play in it. And if yous aren't gonna like respond to me, then what's the point of me even speaking?
So we should just bring you the boxes by now?
Well, there's been loads of stuff that I've been talking about for weeks, and like, oh, I've been doing this, that and the other, that's what I'm saying, loads of it's already done, because I've slaved away and done it on my own. What are you, like, what do yous want from the realm? I can't hear what you're saying.
No, what, uh, ask the question again, please.
What do you want from the realm?
Just chilling and playing with it?
Then how come no one's interested in getting prepared for everyone else to chill and play in it? When it's a community realm, it's all about community. It's not about PvP and everything like everyone thinks it's about. So far PvP's happening one night a goddamn week.
Then I'm not in your house. I'm placing a chest.
You were. Where you in his room, Nico?
Oh, I just crafted boxes.
Doesn't matter. Do you understand why that's a bit of a joke?
I don't get why I should walk about one or two minutes just to craft one thing for five seconds.
No, but it's not the point, you've literally just undermined one rule, so what's the point in the rest of the rules? What's the point in any of the rules if you're not gonna follow one? They could carry a crafting table, there's, there's empty rooms up the frigging stairs. But as soon as you go in his room, as an operator, you're just making the whole thi, that rule pointless. A mod and operator, whatever you want to call it. My goodness gracious me. No one says anything like, "Alright, yeah, that kind of makes sense either," so I feel like I'm just saying shit that doesn't make any sense at all. That's always the case, I'm just sat there whinging about something and no one says, "Oh, I get where you're coming from," or anything like that, so I'm just sat there looking like a little bitch. And if this is what the Minecraft stream is gonna be every single time I come on, then there's no point, is there? Do you know what I mean? It's the same as Among Us. People ask for frigging specific Among Us streams. I literally did it, and this is, like, that was exclusive streaming time as well that I wasted, trying to get an Among Us stream going, no one even came on. Especially the people who asked for the daytime streams and shit. People ask for the realm and they don't even want to play the realm how I want to play the realm.
Shall I, shall I remove my trapdoor?
Your trap, oh, if you want, yeah. There's not really much point in it anymore, is there?
No.
Are you getting in bed, Dan?
Are you needing more, um, chests?
Made shit tons, mate, I've made about 300 so far, and still about half of it to go. Now then, crinkle, mate, how's it going? I mean, who's not in bed? And if it's Dan, then it's kind of stupid, because it's always Dan. My god, another thing, it's one of the frigging rules.
Teen generic ghost.
Right.
And I started from here, and it said that you left.
I don't know, maybe, because I couldn't sleep or something, just go watch it.
She should not be watching my streams.
Should I go and get some boxes for you?
If you want.
I got, I got 50.
You don't have to get them for me, you can place them you goddamn self, that's what I'm saying.
Cal, slow it down. Shut my door then, it's gonna echo.
Hmm. Oops. How the hell do you farm phantoms? What do you farm phantoms for?
I don't have no clue.
Uh, for potions and elitros.
Nicker?
No.
But we don't have elitros though, so, and what potion is it?
It's the, like, flow, if I was gonna slow fall.
I mean, it shouldn't be a solo, there's no solo decision to farm phantoms, is there? Because like, that means we're not, that no one can sleep. So unless it's a group, realm decision to farm phantoms then, then what, how can it be a thing? If you could, you can't, it's like driving in real life, you can't do anything to affect other people. If your thing has to like destroy three people's houses, you can't do it. So if your thing means somebody can't sleep for three days, or five other people can't sleep for three days, then it's just unlucky. More wood. Can I get wood from a stripped oak log? Yes, I can. Nice. So has anyone paid attention to the stream title or not?
We did, but where did we go?
Alright, so we need to sort that out before we go off.
Yeah, ask you a question.
Why were you on, yeah, till 4am?
Because I to try to fix the iron farm.
Hello, Sash.
Soon as I looked on, you looked off.
Yeah, because at some ti, at some point I have to go offline, because I want to sleep.
You're not allowed to play the game ever, Nico, apparently. If you're on, if you're ever on, sus. If you're ever not on, also sus. Welcome back, Sash.
So are all these gonna have like one item for each, just for?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, does, should someone get the lever for the item frames or?
Yeah, yeah, sure, why not?
Nico, you got loot and free heaven.
We don't need to make an item frame for every single one, we'll just go slowly, like, while we fill them with stuff, you know what I mean? Because obviously there's no point in doing all that right now.
So it's one, what is it called? One line, one item, or is it just one chest?
No, one chest will be full, for example, of spruce. One will be full of iron bars.
I've got four item frames, what should I do with them? Should I just?
Just bang them on the end of a chest, yeah, like, you know, like, from the middle, do it on that side, if you get me. On the inside, pointing towards the middle.
I'm doing it like a row, so... Do we have to do two per chest or just one?
No, just one on the side of the chest, like, the side that points towards the middle. Yeah. I've got one box left. There's not many now, like, a few, a few hundred more.
Just a few hundred more.
Oh crap. What, a few hundred more?
Yeah, I have a bit more wood.
How many is this? Oh, 31.
Does anyone have sticks? Because I've got two lever.
Um, I actually don't have much in the way of wood anymore, I've made too many boxes.
Uh, a creeper behind you.
Yeah, the light needs sorting out down here, it's a little bit off, if you know what I mean. I'm not sure if it's down here or not. It's just in certain places, because when I'm placing the boxes, like, the, some of the torches need moving, so...
By the way, don't get near the iron golem. He's a bit aggressive.
Can you get him unaggressive?
Uh, we, we can try to box him.
What do you mean, box him?
Uh, because for someone...
What do you mean, like boxing as in boxing? Like punch, punch?
No, no, like, make him in the box, like a little tiny room under, like, just a hole or somewhere. Because someone, someone punched the villager and that's why he's taking us.
Who punched the villager? Because I have not been near that far.
I don't know, someone yesterday, after I went off, I, like, today I locked back on and someone griefed the thing already.
Wait, how do you place the frames?
Uh, sneak, you have to sneak.
Oh, yeah, so hang it on the side, like the actual outside of the box, if you get me, not the front. Know what I mean?
Yeah, I know what you mean, that's why I was asking then.
Like the end. Because then you can see it without looking at the front, if you get me. I mean, it's not that big of a deal when you're like further through, but, you know. Anyways, is it nighttime at all now?
You want me to get you a watch, so we don't have to like rely on our people?
I've still got that one you gave me before, my dimmerip. I just put it all away, because like, probably went in the never or something at one time. Oh, this is attractive. No, it's fine. It's not a bit of a deal right now.
I can make 45 more sticks.
Sticks?
Yes, because that's what you need for item frames, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, sticks and lever.
Just make them for like the first row for now. Shouldn't need any more than that, like, because we're probably not gonna fill too much right now.
I've got, uh, two lever, which is nice.
I, I, I will get some cows with the looting sword.
Or you could just get them in freedom.
Yeah, ball sack end.
They, they still have to grow, so...
TY.
The thing is...
Hey, he's not aggressive anymore.
Oh.
Right, I've got two more item frames. That, I'm just gonna be, I'm gonna put my trapdoor just quicker way to come down.
Some random person has invited me to play Minecraft. I'm sure they've played before. Ow.
What a... I've been, I've been taking damage from doors recently, and I don't know why.
Hmm, that happens when I go in my dimmerip.
Uh... I have nine gold here, that's gonna be completely useless, but, eh...
You can make more for rails from it.
Yeah, I mean, I got, I had 11 rails, I put them in my, my chest and they're gone. But I did pick them to never. I'm not sure who it was, but me and, I know someone else, we did, we flattened the, we lowered the level of the door.
Mm-hmm, Sash, yeah. TYVM. Two, 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 YVM.
By the way, we're there, wherever we are, but we still don't have a way to like, have like a lock check, where like, where we see what, like, we're joined and left and a lot of stuff, right?
Mate, that says don't take anything. This thing says don't take anything on it, how does it, how come it says that?
Uh, because someone, um, renamed the block in the envelope.
Rename what block?
The block on the item frame, the item in there, if you rename the item, right?
But I've just, I've just put that on there.
There.
Eh?
Or.
This speci- five of these are called don't ta- you might have one in your inventory now called don't take anything.
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. What, shot here, mate?
The way I just do it, just do.
Oh, that's gonna go on, what?
You can't.
It changed it back to number cobblestone.
Oh, does it? Oh, here then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got another stack of chips.
As soon as you play die, it gets, it gets back to normal.
There you go.
There you go. I'm just gonna get mine. I've got a, I've got a load of cobblestone, I don't know why.
Cause it's needed. We need infinite cobblestone.
Does anyone want to offer a full forty sugar cane?
We'll try and keep it a bit thematic as well, so like, we'll have it in a bit of a, well, actually, no, for now, we won't keep it in order, cause we can sort that out, it shouldn't be too, it's only two, like an inventory full, or two inventory fulls, so. Yeah, we'll just go with what we, whatever we've got.
Would you say leaves are useful or not?
Leaves? Oh yeah, definitely.
Yeah.
They're part of the frigging theme of the decor.
Wow.
And I need, I'm moving the yes island sign up one, I might do that now, actually, after this, as a little bit of a break, cause I've been in that basement for like about a week now. Anyway.
It's night time again, by the way.
Yeah, I'm in my, in the room now.
Just checking.
It's not quite night time, it's gonna be in about three seconds though.
Yeah.
No.
No. Oh shit, Mahman was slain.
Yeah, I died in the never today.
But I'll leave it.
By the way, whoever keeps blowing up the never on this, like, surface level where, where you spawn, please stop it.
Well, it might have been TDDOG or Reese. They both had their access revoked.
It's not hope, so. So if I went to the.
By the way, we should, we still, you still want me to ban them, so they can't even join back or?
I've already, no, you, it's, it's like, um, you know how you have to be invited to play? It's like you've, I've removed the invite, so they can't join.
Just remove terms.
But they can be invited again, I can undo the thing, sort of thing.
Don't they still have the code to join back?
No.
Hmm, I don't know, cause it won't work like that, there's like, it's like a minus symbol, so it's like a half block, if you get me, you know what I mean? It's like, it's almost like an IP block, maybe, not really an IP block, but kinda, if you get what I'm trying to describe.
Good, I guess.
Ooh, there's the cobble one full, we don't need any more cobble fans.
You want the next chest, like, right after that, like a full, uh, clean stone chest and like?
No, we'll do that later, I'm doing the next one as bread.
I could try and get some, cause I've got quite a big creep.
Yeah, there's wheat all over, I've got wheat at my place and all that. Everyone's got. I think your sister's just commented. Can I join your live? From Corts Vlogs, you know what I mean? You what?
Should, should, should.
Uh, not yet, uh, well, it depend, we don't have enough sugar cane, I wouldn't say, to make like a full box, but like, bread is a necessary one that I wanna, I like, I actually want to get built.
Yeah, I know, just as a chest for the future, if we do get enough.
Yeah, we've got, we've got quite a lot of, uh. I'm gonna make a dirt one.
Sweet berries?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's no point, oh yeah.
No, no, do it, yeah. Mate, what if somebody just says like, nah, I only eat sweet berries? I'm like, right, well, say no more, we've got twelve billion sweet berries right here, and a small farm outside.
Green feathers.
But with like dirt, you know what we can do? We can, oh, I've got exciting ideas, this is what I'm saying, we need to get all this stuff made, so then we can be like, alright, Corts Tour today, it's like, competition time or something, and we're gonna build some shit, so like, everyone gets like a stack, a stack of cobble, a stack of dirt, and a stack of wood, and that's it, you've gotta make what you can, you know what I'm saying, that type of thing.
Yeah.
Everyone starts with the same three things or something, and then you get like an hour, or half an hour or something, to make the best thing you can make, oh.
That's gonna annoy me a lot.
No, what?
I've got my trapdoor where I originally had it, and I've just realised.
Can you not get down it?
The trapdoor, you fall straight down onto a chest.
That's fine, isn't it? Doesn't matter where you land, does it?
True.
Why do we even have a trapdoor here?
That, that was where the old portal was, which I moved.
Supreme Weeb, welcome.
Blocked it.
I see TikTok is going pretty decent. I need to get used to pressing the like button. But I do watch.
Yeah, that's where those neverboulders.
Yeah, I know, I'm gonna, that's what I was gonna go and do a sec, I was just literally, when I asked if it was night time before, before it went night, I was gonna go and get my pickaxe and get rid.
You, you want me to remove the puddle or?
It's sound, I'm gonna go, oh, crap stain, ooh, crap. I remembered that I've got an, uh, a neverite ingot or something that I wanted to put in my.
B-chest.
Yeah, my ender chest, yeah.
I put the only.
But I can't remember where I've put it.
I'm not using, cause I will die with it a lot. Like my shop.
Yeah, I think we need a few more chests, yeah.
That Nika gave.
I'm not a hundred percent sure though.
I, I gave you what?
The sh- that was, the iron sword.
Probably like stack a bit of chest.
Yeah, there's not many now. But we'll have like, well, I suppose that's a bit excessive, I was gonna say, well, no, actually, cause do, um, do, uh, spades and stuff don't stack together, so we can have like one that's full of iron swords or something, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
This is not my ender chest.
Then we can do iron sword or armor.
Mm-hmm. And then we can be like, right, it's time to do this frigging, we'll do like a tournament with iron stuff this time, hoo, ha, ha, ha. Everyone get your iron stuff.
Plus, it wouldn't be like, if you didn't, if you didn't have enough, it wouldn't actually affect you, cause you could just.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Go and get the. Well, in fact, you've got two neverite ingots and they're both in my chest. So I'm not. I should put my diamond in my chest, but I can't be bothered.
It's a nice big che- uh, uh, tree, Nico.
Hmm?
It's a nice big tree, I'm impressed, I like it.
Beautiful tree.
It is, how is it so big?
Um, you can.
Just space?
It's random.
Yeah, yeah, it's normally random, but you can, uh, force them to grow like that.
With bone meal?
No, no, uh, let's say you have like a tiny, you want a tiny tree, right? Uh, over this apple, and you count like three blocks out there, you pla- uh, place a block, so it's a tiny one. Or you can like put cobblestone to the side of them, to make them forced to grow bigger, so.
Oh, so it like stops the leaves from coming out as quick, sort of thing?
Yeah, of course, the leaves won't replace blocks, that's why you have to.
Ah, so you can make it go super skinny and tall?
Yeah.
Oh, so we can do that on the, the arena?
I think so.
To like make it, the, the leaves like spread a bit more, oh, well, not necessarily just the arena, but the, cause I want the sacred tree going all the way to the base of the arena. It's already getting there. Yeah, this person's got a room on the first floor.
Yeah, I was very worried last night, but we'd had, me and Nico had no clue who he was, and he joined.
And he wasn't responding to us, like, yo, where are you, what are you doing, uh, I don't know, we just joined the realm and after that he never responded to us.
Oops. Good morning slash night. Do-dee-doom, dee-dee-doom-doom, you're. You're. Okay. Oh no. I put my food in the, um, communal area, I've left myself with none. I'm dying! Oh my god, it's a slime man. I'm a curma red now, nice. TY. This will speed things up. Hi, Don. Meow, 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 meow. Speaking of, I'm actually gonna do my diamond pickups, pickups up a little bit. Beep. Wow. Invite me to play his two sec yundes, and I will. Oh crap! Beep, boop, beep. Nico, does that come up for me or just everyone?
No, only for you, cause you're the operator, like you're the owner of the world.
What's the, um, the upgrade nev- uh, diamond to neverite with?
Courtney, can you bring me some?
What for?
You will see if you're a riot at my house.
What? What did, what did it say?
You were.
Oh, TY.
You can come get them then, because I'm doing one in a second.
Do you still need more, uh, chests, by the way, or is it fine now?
Huh?
I mean, generally, if we still need more chests or if everything is, you have no.
Eh, I don't know yet, I'll see.
I thought I did give you some, gave you my.
Yeah, I've got some, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just came out of the hole.
Upgrades diamond to neverite.
I'm sorry.
Dan, there is one in my room.
Oh yeah, we have, I have one as well.
Meow. Supreme Weeb, what are you called on Playstation?
Thank you.
Meow.
Under.
Oh, this isn't, I need, yeah, I need more chests.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ah, you penis head. Cloxie, oh yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Oh, did you have a room in the, the original hotel?
Thank you, Nico.
I think you did. Maybe. Ba-da-da-da-dun-da, da, da, da.
Is there anything, uh, I can get while I'm out here?
Uh, whatever you want.
I could get some blackstone for you, Nico.
I have enough blackstone.
Oh, so, oh, I can probably count how many chests I need, yeah, yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, times two, I need, uh, twenty-eight more. Cloxie, I'm inviting you right now, we'll get you a room in this, uh, barracks. What do, ooh, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, right, when, when Cloxie's in, we're gonna get a screenshot. We'll have like ten people in, that'll be sick screenshot. Is everyone in agreement, yeah?
Yeah.
There you go.
Oh my god, it's fetching realm information.
Uh, by the way, you know the little public, uh, farm we have, right, with the animals?
Yeah.
You want me to get a cow there as well, or?
Oh, so we've got two?
No, we've got one, I think.
Oh.
Someone, someone killed a cow, that's why I'm asking.
Oh no, that's what I'm saying, like, like, so we have two again?
Oh yeah, yeah, we have.
Yeah, I accidentally killed too many yesterday, it was like six in there originally. When I hit one, it went further away, so I hit another one, and that moved away, so I hit another one, but then I think one moved as I killed the second one, so I killed two more. Eh, Cloxie, are you on the Discord? Because it's probably gonna be easier for me to send you the link, cause the, the, the lo- the list isn't loading in the game. But yeah, Cloxie, if you aren't in the Discord, can you invite me now? I'll have a look, one sec. It's not the normal friends list, that's the problem. But I'll check.
I've got a wood farm, my dear.
S1E, welcome. You've got what, sorry?
A wood farm, my dear.
Alright, planting trees.
Uh, who runs the car?
Oh.
I'm working on getting bread for tomorrow.
It's not working. Are you on Discord or not? Uh, Supreme Weeb slash Cloxie, Cloxler, Cloxler, how's it going, S1E? You're off here, eh? There is the Discord link in a sec, anywhere, in the chat. Down, nee, nee, nee. No, I'm not, oh damn, uh. I can send you it on TikTok. Oh, just on Playstation, one sec, I'm see if I can find you on my Playstation friends list, and then I can send you on Playstation message.
Thank you. I, I mean, I've regained that, I have time, so that's fine. That did five hearts, by the way.
That, I punched you with my.
Yeah, I found you on my, um, Playstation, I'll, I'll message you the, the link.
No, no, listen, listen, I made, look, I made that, and after I swung, I changed my sword. But how, how can it make five hearts of damage?
I don't know.
My, my hands are just massive, just as strong as butter in the game. Then you may wanna go to sleep.
Oh, is it night time?
It is night.
Two seconds, I'm gone. Right, there you go, I've sent you a written message. Da-da-da, aw, man.
Did you put the, uh, schedule up?
No, there's not one, yeah. Well, it's Friday now, I probably won't do one for this week, probably just do one for next week now.
It's Saturday.
Is it? There you go. Eh. Is, 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 is Don, oh, Don, you leaving, leaving?
No, I left because it was.
Alright, good, good, good. We'll do the, we'll do the meeting on the screenshot at the same time, pretty much.
Should we bring anything now or?
No, no.
Why so?
Gotta make so much bread.
Um, Shex is not listening, basically, so I'm doing that.
Is it, uh? Is it there so I can join?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, sorry.
Cool. I charged my player. It's on fifteen percent. Buy a half a day before I can join then.
Aw, man!
So where, oh, sorry, where did, where are we gonna meet?
Two seconds.
Oh shit, my controller's dead.
I'm quite far away, so it's gonna send me off to get back.
Why, where are you? How far are you?
I have no idea, I just kinda wandered off, went through an auction, started mining.
Oh.
I was looking for a redstone.
You could have just asked me not to.
I think I had, I think I had some.
Oh.
I'll check. I'll check if I do then I'll give it to you
I also needed some iron as well so I went for that as well
yeah I put two iron
that would have gotten fast right
I said I need to go also could I could I extend the berry farm it's already in
you what
could I you know the berry farm
outside
yeah
nah mate there's already a massive one near the frigging communal pool and that one's already big enough isn't it what the hell do you need more berries for eh Nico what you doing
oh yeah but where are you out there I I just brought I'm gonna bring generic a present that's why I'm taking one tiny minute more
has everyone got an empty slot empty slot empty slot in their inventory
yeah Bonzi you're way too far out I don't I don't think there's a point of you coming if you're like actually so so far out you would have like wait like twenty minutes for you
I mean it might take it might take me that long to find my way out of this cave
generic I brought you a present
right just leave it there
you have to locate it
it's got something in it how'd you look in it
eh if you press on
oh my sweet Jesus
wanna have it
why's it got what what's the golden helmet for
it's a crown
oh my god right tie it up here can you tie it up to this thing here
yeah whoever has to leave tie it up there no I bought him a donkey which is named generic ghost and X in it
it's named generic ghost
yeah
oh I didn't even notice that I thought that was you when you got on it I thought it was your name or something I didn't I didn't see the letters though they've been blended in or something right let's go to the tower thing
we should met without armor right
yeah well eh yeah 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 skins out you know what I'm saying sounds weird
silent stop shooting those rockets you could hear people of that stuff
Nico have you got some water
I don't uh Courtney you have some
it's okay it's okay this isn't what we're standing on no cuz uh we it's okay look boom right look 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 right hang on excuse me eh oh there you go pickaxe easy can you place these in front oh it sucks balls that you can't place these in front
uh you want me to make it quickly
yeah keep going to the top I'll just I'll I'll carry it onto the bottom
oh oh wait uh crafting can does someone have a crafting table
uh yeah I do
no one saw that surprise didn't they
saw what
I changed my I changed my skin for a split second
hey what you doing Nico no this isn't so people can get up this no no it's well I'm I'm trying to make something in as a replacement so we can stand on like a whoa what you doing no what are you doing oh my goodness gracious me if you could place yeah if you could place them and then I can place these on top
I just made all does someone have cobblestone all my my stairs and I made all my stone stairs
oh as if you can't place what why can't I place this block this is cobble man it wouldn't let me excuse me excuse me let me try well let me place it there one sec I need to see if I can place it at the top there it won't let me play it oh it has hang on this is might be high enough oh god
you want me to mine other thing down though
yeah 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 yeah
yeah that could hurt a lot of people Thailand if you wanna start a fight
oops
I hope so
we're just gonna leave this donkey
yeah so he will represent generic if he's not online
it's just for the screenshot it's just so we can all stand on it right we need to bring it down now how do we do it I would I would like eh not down like as in like knock it down as in like it going down can we can we do Nico what you doing where's your where's your cobblestone blocks man
oh as I said no one gave me cobblestone blocks I will just get a stick of cobble give me one second
no it's fine I it it just needs to be a I need to figure out where to start it from
you just made me in the line right
eh do you just want me to come or not
you can if you want it's gonna take about two more minutes
alright I'll set off once I get the rest
I think that should be fine you mind like you mean like building straight in that direction now
no I'm trying to make like a tower downwards so like it's like a point so one person will be stood here and then one person will be slightly down you know what I mean but I'm trying to make it with yeah exactly like podium but with stairs so it looks nicer than just horrible blocks you know what I mean
I mean just on the side or you mean that
you what
you mean placing them on the side or what
what did you listen at all Nico
I I am trying to understand what you want from me right
so the stairs go up this way I want them to go down the other way straight across I just need to figure out where to oops it's pointing the wrong way sad times
alright I'm on my way back now
oh just down now
yeah just down
I think we have to count blocks for that
yeah I know okay count them did you die
I'm too stupid to count weight eh one
oh Blaze is back
I'll get a cobble get some cobble while I'm here
we don't need it oh shit I'm picking your stuff up I've just realised remember it's not the same level here
twen- twenty-two so I think thirty where did you get seventeen from
it's okay it's not gonna work the counting isn't gonna work cuz it's not the same height here you know what I'm saying
eh how about we just go a bit further right and like the the gap that's missing right we'll just fill out with like a line instead of the stairs if you know what I mean
I have no idea what you mean to be honest
so so basically we build up from a bit further right and whatever the gap is like up there is just normal blocks
what gap
we will have a gap for example if we build from here right there are like a few blocks missing you know what I mean
huh where are you oh no it's night time I think this is the lost cause to be honest right everyone go to bed because of the fucking mons- monsters are coming otherwise
oh yes random chest in the helicopter I don't know why
yeah yeah leave it but why are you in a helicopter by the way
not yours
oh no
it's not in your house uh Courtney I think you're sleeping and Blaze is back
always Blaze here
yeah like you may just wanna leave for a second
I'll leave yeah
boom I got two fucking heads last year what the fuck ah man laggy my own mug I'm sorry I was lagging there I think YouTube flagged your message cuz it had said fucking in it right we're not doing screenshot this time we need to make the screenshot podium and that's gonna take long enough
why not screenshot now
I don't really have time it's already tea time or dinner time don't know what you wanna refer it to us
I need to go see make it though like so next time you're on you
yeah yeah you can if you want just literally follow it down if you know what I mean it doesn't even have to go all the way to the floor that's the frustrating thing cuz it just needs to be eh a few more steps down on the opposite side if you know what I mean
is there anything specific else you wanted to do
I don't know just let's have a look eh oh that's a lot of freaking town meeting that's what I was gonna say but it doesn't really matter I'll do that tomorrow I was gonna give people like you know little chops and that you know what I mean like I was talking about the other day now that we've got chests and stuff so from you Nico I want a full double chest of neverite I'm only joking anyway I just wanted to hear what someone said bye tomorrow morning mate sixty what how many is it sixty-four block like spaces in a double chest
do you know the tactic to get more than everite
sixty-four blocks with sixty-four stacks of
yeah just just a crap ton of beds that's all you need
it was a joke anyway
oh he will be online tomorrow
x-ray what's x-ray what is x-ray
eh x-ray is you know like you can can see all the ore yeah you see all
boring try hard boring
silence oh that's how you
no I never
silence are you sure
no I never I'm on console
no don't try it on me
din 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 berries dirt what's going in this one
where which chest is that
not gonna lie but your laugh sounds real fake who's laugh who's laughing
okay Nico do not hit me do do not hit me with with that goddamn sword I will literally die don't
no griefing Nico need a billion torches
I have a sharpness for looking free burning to nah I just I just enchanted it one time I got all that it's fine
berries oh crap Dan
why are you running I actually I'm not gonna hit you right why are you running
um let's just say a lot
more than one stack
eh yeah yeah
what are you making Bonzi what are you doing with the redstone
decorating my room if I'm allowed anyway
yeah yeah you can change rooms if you want yeah
alright that's fine
what was I getting I forgot now if if any oh yeah I've got a couple of bits yeah yeah I've got I think I've got your pickaxe your sword and your two iron oh and the spear that must be yours oh no the spear it's mine yeah the spear's mine
no I don't I didn't have a spear
yeah
eh Courtney can I rob some of your carrots
sweet berries so this is the thing so you know for example like when I built the barracks we wouldn't need to build another barracks eventually eh but like needed shit tons of glass obviously if we have a thing downstairs with like an entire thing full of glass boom don't even need to farm it's just there obviously we need to farm like prior to it but you know if anyone's got like any little bit of shitty wheat or seeds about I'm making a seed box and a wheat box
we ought to make a an automated ice maker
I don't think it's a good idea cuz it'll make the server lag someone made something oh no it wasn't a redstone finger like was it it was just chickens
no it was just about fifty to seventy chickens in one block
why
I don't know he's
I really like chickens well wish me luck lads I've got a test tomorrow and it's food tech choose it for a GCSE and I gotta make lasagna lasagna hmm I like lasagna tasty layers of tomato cheese cheese sauce pasta what was that where did you get that from where did you get that from it's not mine but it just absolutely magnified to my head oh my god did you see that
eh we need another one of that right and then
no because my one is staying what oh no wait oh it's okay it's okay why is there a double there's a there's a thing miss eh eh I thought I'd accidentally done this entire row one off do you know what I mean but it's it's fine it's fine it's fine I was gonna I was gonna like freak out I'm not gonna yeah
if we're done with the double
whoa what the hell happened to you there Don you literally teleported to the basement and then back up to your door but you were like getting damaged while it happened
the door you know like the same glitch you have with your
yeah but did it did it ping that far on mine
that's what happens on other people's screen you glitch through the block
but he went on he literally he didn't just glitch through the block he was under the like in the basement again he wasn't at his door anymore there you go Dan's just got magic powers obviously teleportation I mean I wear it's a bit of banter no actually okay so some things so say like um saplings we're not gonna need an entire thing of saplings if you get me like of one so we'll just do like a line of each tree if you get me that'll be decent in 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 the sapling one nice well there you go so like we can you know we need to this is what I mean about roles and stuff like little jobs like get five stacks of wood biage I mean depends on the thing actually depends on the um the material cuz wood's very easy to get isn't it you just plant a few tree and wait a day then a free arrow
yeah same in the arrow loaded in
an arrow
an arrow
an arrow oh that is a big giant floor there's two floating trees right next to the bloody barracks and I wanna stub it
yeah I got rid of one floating tree that was somewhere around I don't know why no one can follow that rule it's like the easiest rule is just chop just chop down the entire tree
cuz people are quite easy
what the hell is an infinity villager
yeah yeah that's the one
how many blocks can you reach is there an actual number is it like eight or something
no it's nowhere near eight it's far too far
oh is it oh
yeah I think so I think it's like five or or six maybe
one two three four five oh I'm I'm underestimating just how far away five blocks is
yeah Yeah.
Oh crap.
Come in.
Knock, knock. Knock, knock. I think I've soaked in a bit of dust, doesn't help me at all. I'm not.
I'm watching you.
I'm not dying, I've already died.
Oh, trust me, fine.
I don't have any trust, I've got trust issues.
Fair enough. I was gonna search somewhere, but I completely forgot what it was now.
Why does generic have trust issues? Who heard him? The life-shattering answer, everyone, oh no! Eh 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 eh.
I haven't got potatoes. I hope you don't have them on a farm, bro.
Got the sign.
Oh, they was where the pumpkins were.
Oh, you know potatoes are way better than carrots, right?
You want to design that?
Can you get sweet potatoes?
Uh, no.
Fake, what's it for a fucking clue?
Baked potato went home.
Unpoisonous.
Yeah, if you. Very tasty ones, potatoes.
Probably are.
Forget what I was gonna do, I've got like a shot to my real life, so I was gonna do some, forget what I was gonna do, remember them, forget again.
That's what I do.
That's not much to be fun.
That's nothing, buddy.
So, my, I kind of had an idea, right? This was a few weeks ago for the barrack, oh, it's nighttime, anyway.
Um, Courtney, do you have a spare?
You can finish writing your sign.
But, uh, I might save it for the next one. I think I actually did say that, I think I did mention it, actually. I was saying like making it into a spider or something to expand it. So the corridors would go out like sort of arching legs and then the rooms would be at the feet of the legs.
I found the zombie spawn, just broke it. I was like, I'm not dealing with that.
Can we move spawns with silk touch?
Uh, no.
Hmm, so we can't like literally make like an even deeper bit in our, uh, barracks and then like have a zombie farm there or something?
I mean, you could, but you'd have, you wouldn't use a spawn for it, you'd have to just make it really dark.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's kind of what I did underneath the dimmer it before. It was just like very dark when I was mining away and there was always stuff to kill, maybe, oh, that's what I was gonna do before, yes, I'll quickly do that and then I'm off for my food.
Uh, by the way, you want to do the never?
The never? Oh, we don't have, uh, I mean, oh, right, like, yeah, yeah, like design it and stuff, yeah, yeah, cuz we'll, we'll actually do that tomorrow, we'll do the little front bit if you want, like tomorrow. I'm, I'm streaming again today, but I'm playing Destruction All Stars, you what, sorry?
Did you mind down Dan's, uh, portal? He said you're gonna do.
You what, sorry?
The, you know, Dan had the portal downstairs.
Yeah, I've already took it down.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, that's what I want.
Oh, right, I thought you, I couldn't hear what you were quite saying. I couldn't hear quite hear what you were saying, not quite saying, yeah, that makes sense, it does, it's fine. So, yeah, the, um, if anybody like, you know, just wants somebody, something to do, like, the, the chests that are already in the basement, just like, you know, if you wanna just kill some time, just like, get, yeah, get some stuff.
I would say glass is bomb.
Yeah, yeah, well, I've already said that. Definitely, cuz when we build the second barracks, even if it ends up the same, we're gonna need more glass, so.
I bet you got some glass.
Well, yeah, I wanna make, I want, one of the things I wanna do for Fight Night Friday is to make a thumbnail slash poster thing. But I wanna make the Fight Night Friday look like the Minecraft farm. Like actual stone.
I thought this is gonna poison me.
Tame the cat and bring it to the dimmer it, put it in the corner of the fa, of the outside fenced area, walled area.
It looks like you've mixed all the skittles in it, I'm gonna melt it down, and the, all we caused that remains is put on a grime layer.
I have no fish, oh damn. Uh, if you go into my barracks room, you have mission, by the way. If you go into my barracks room, there might be some there, in, in one of the chests near the bed. I don't know, though, there might not be. Am I already using your enchantment table, Nico? Nice one. Oh, where's the thing gone? How do I get up?
Uh, you have to go through.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, what, I, I just went up the stairs. Oh crap, I don't know if I'll be able to afford this now.
Is there a glass chest?
Uh, wait, what, why can't I use, what, it's not?
You can't, you can't enchant already enchanted.
Oh, you can just combine, bollocks. That's fair enough. Okay, well, I'll do some. Oh, Don, I've still got your stuff.
Fine, you can drop off when you, if you're.
Am I in your realm?
Well, I'm gonna be right behind you.
You what, Nico? See you soon, boys. Oh, well, I'll be off anyway, so.
I can't really move.
See you as well.
In a biz. You can't move, like, like, on the game, like physically?
I can, I just slowly wa, uh, like, go forward, but I don't move, I can't move.
Whoa, when did this happen? Did someone else do this? Someone's done this, haven't they?
Some, someone had placed that, yeah. Dan, didn't you said you were making kelp?
Yeah.
In, under the dimmer it, by any chance?
I only put it, uh, near the, what's it called?
Oh, my god.
What's it called? Do you know where?
Dan, you may wanna not do that.
You've literally flooded my fucking portal, portal chamber, whoever's done this, for fuck's sake. Now this is just a massive bullshit thing for me to sort out again, fuck's sake.
I have a water helmet, so I can breathe longer on the water, I'm just gonna get rid of everything.
No, I don't mean that, I mean my fucking portal chamber's flooded as well. So I've gotta try and sort the water out that's like coming in and make it look right again. I'm off, I can't be fucking asked doing whatever I was trying to do there, I'll see yous tomorrow, I mean, I'll see yous later for Destruction All Stars. Bloody hell. In a bit, goodbye stream, thank you so much, whoever's there, blah 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 blah, goodbye, food. In a bit, Discord fam.